And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Tulley.
Here.
Councillor Selly.
Here.
Councillor Powers. Councillor Scamperly.
Here.
Councillor Stevenson. Councillor Trim.
Here.
Councillor Weaver.
Here.
Quorum present.
And I would note both Councillor Powers and Councillor Stevenson are traveling out of town tonight, and so I would seek consensus to council to excuse them from this meeting? Yes. Thank you. We have one presentation tonight, and that's from interim city manager Andrea Smith regarding update on grants.
Thank you, Mayor. On May 13th... Really working or not? On May 13th, Governor Hope announced the launch of round 14 of the Regional Economic Council Initiative. This is more commonly referred to as the Consolidated Funding Applications. This year, the funding includes $445 million in capital grants and tax credits, which are available for municipalities as well as not-for-profits and the private sector. So I would encourage any interested party to take a look at the CFA Resource Guide, which is available through the city's website under the Planning Department, Grant Opportunities. There's a tab there to the Resource Guide. It's also available through NewYorkState.gov or simply by Googling "New York State Consolidated Funding Applications." The deadline to apply for these applications is July 31st. We, as staff, will be presenting our recommendations for CFA funding on behalf of the city of Augsburg at the June 24th City Council Meeting. In addition to the CFA grants, the city is currently preparing two LEA grants, which is for water infrastructure improvements. These are to be submitted this week, June 14th. We are seeking funding through EFC for the reconstruction of East David Street, specifically the water infrastructure portion of that project, as well as the rehabilitation of two of the city's pump stations, the South Water Street Pump Station and the Heavy Industrial Pump Station. And we are eagerly awaiting the opening of the fourth round of New York Swims, which is anticipated to open this Wednesday, June 13th, and those applications are expected to be due on July 12th. And we're looking at eligible projects for the pool and the pool area, and we look forward to presenting a resolution at the June 24th meeting for that as well. Additionally, there's a new program this year funded through New York State, which is called the Green Resiliency Grant Program. This program is accepting applications through August 16th, and it focuses on the reduction of stormwater runoff, including projects to address combined indoor sanitaries or overflow during extreme weather events, which is an issue that we deal with here quite frequently. And so we're working through a few options and looking forward to presenting something to council on that as well. So more to come on this in the coming council meetings, but I did just want to take an opportunity to remind the public that CFAs are not limited to municipalities, so please do take a look at those. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the planning office. Happy to go through it with you and answer your questions at a local level, or make sure you get directed to the appropriate state agency for assistance.
Any comments or questions from council? Thank you for this update, Andrea. And again, we encourage the public, you know, if you think you might have an opportunity for a project or something going on that might qualify for a grant, please take advantage of the information that's posted on the city's website. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so that brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
The first individual is registered as Jennifer Stevenson, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Thank you, Kathy. I just wanted to let council know that I am monitoring this remotely, and I apologize for not being in person, but I am here listening, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised.
Correspondence? Do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Next, we move to our consent agenda. That the claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant 11-2024 in the amount of $421,070.58 and Library Warrant Number 11-2024 in the amount of $0 and Capital Fund Warrant Number 11-2024 in the amount of $5,600 and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 11-2024 in the amount of $0 and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 11-2024 in the amount of $0 as audited be in the same hereby our order paid. I so move. Any discussion? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by City Controller Angela Gray.
Good evening, council. This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to modify the general fund budget to recognize additional federal aid from Operation Stone Garden and to increase appropriations for the purpose purchase of a Trunark Thermo Scientific Instrument.
I can move that. Any questions or discussion? And for the balance of the public, it's an increase in budget revenue of $33,400 with an increase in specialized equipment in the same dollar amount, again, with the intention to use the funding to purchase a Trunark Thermo Scientific Instrument to assess a drug identification.
Correct, and this is a piece of equipment that will be added to the police department.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Tulley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by City Controller Angela Gray.
The next resolution is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to modify the general fund budget to transfer appropriations in excess of 5% of the city manager department budget.
I'll move that. Second. Questions or discussion? So I'll deflect the answer. Would you mind doing the highlights, please, for the public?
Sure. We are... The city has hired a new city manager to begin on July 11th, July 1, rather, I apologize. And so we have done a forecast of the budget, and there are a couple lines that needed some money moved into them to cover the contract. And there would be surplus in the health insurance with inside the city manager's budget, by which we could take that, but the transfer amount exceeds more than 5% of the overall department budget, so we just formalize this to let council know where the money is coming from and going to.
Questions? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Tulley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Approved. Thank you.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution to amend the 2024 Budget Line A5110.330 to include the receipt of CHIPS allocation in the amount of $446,181.93 with a 2023 rollover balance of $170,465.39. Pave New York allocation in the amount of $111,196.91. EWR allocation in the amount of $75,884.40. STR allocation in the amount of $165,065.32. And POP allocation in the amount of $74,131.27 for a grand new total of $1,042,925.22.
I can move that. Questions for discussion?
Shane, is this an increase, represent an increase in state aid, or is it just a final, whatever they came up with, a final appropriation?
They came up with a final appropriation. It's about the same as we got last year besides our rollover, but we always keep it at the $500,000 mark to start with, just because we don't know whether they're going to go up or down each year.
Okay. Nice. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Tulley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly.
Yes.
Councillor Trim. Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business, I will introduce a resolution in support of essential air service proposal. Whereas the United States Department of Transportation and the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority have solicited proposals for essential air service in the North Country, and whereas three options were received, Boutique, Breeze, and Contour Airline Service, and whereas the Augsburg City Council has reviewed, will review these proposals at the request of the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority to determine which airline best satisfies the air travel needs of the Augsburg area, and whereas after consideration, the Augsburg City Council recommends a proposal for one of these three options, and now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby supports a proposal for one of these three options as its preferred proposal for essential air service for the Augsburg Airport, and be it further resolved that the city clerk forward copies this resolution to the chairman of the OBPA, Mr. Vernon Sam Burns, and Ms. Marie Therese Dominguez, Esquire New York State DOT Commissioner. I so move.
Second.
Okay, so want that, just to put this on the table, and then after we have some discussion about this, we'll poll the council to see what preferences people have about making an recommendation, and at that point, we'll go back into the amendment resolution. So with that, we'll just go across the board here and see what people's thoughts are. Any comments or questions? We'll start with Councillor Trim.
I guess I'm leaning a little bit towards Breeze. As the choice between the three of them. So I like that the choice goes to New York Boutique. I don't know if there's a market, do you know if there's a market for people who want to go toward New York City area, or more just Florida in the south?
Don't have specific marketing information in any of the proposals or from the Bridge and Port Authority, other than information we received on a different inquiry two or three weeks ago. We were told that a high proportion of travelers out of the Augsburg Airport are looking to travel to Florida or points south. Councillor Weaver?
Yeah, Breeze is, seems to be a fairly good... What I could see, I mean, they seem to, a lot of people go to Florida. I don't know, I'm kind of... We had, who do we have now?
Currently, Contour Airways is servicing the Augsburg.
I flew out with Contour. I was pleased with them. You know, whatever will fit into our routine of, you know, flying out of here and getting the people where they want to go. Like I said, Florida is a big thing, and we just fly out of, basically, they just fly from to Philadelphia, correct?
Yeah, two flights a day to Philadelphia, and that is, our current proposal is renewal of that, of those trips. Councillor Scamperly?
So, first of all, I like the two airlines that offer the jet engine, jet propulsion as opposed to turbo. I think another thing that I'm looking at is numbers, trying to expand the airport, trying to get a lot of people here. I remember when Allegiant was here, we had some of our highest numbers of travelers, and Allegiant was going to Florida. In particular, their highest month, I know, was pointed out, I think it was March of 2020, and between Washington and Florida, the numbers were the highest. And I think Breeze is modeling the program after Allegiant. I know their trip to Washington is EAS, and then they expressed wholehearted interest, I believe, in bringing in the Florida flight directly, even if it's seasonal, to pack those planes and get them in. They're a young company, they have brand-new jets, and the numbers, when you look at the numbers, and they're estimating 50,000 flights, or excuse me, passengers in and out, seven days a week to Washington for the EAS, which I know is the focus of our study. I think I'm going to go with Breeze strongly, with Breeze. And I'd like to say we're very fortunate to have the three different options. They're very diverse, and everything from a small plane, eight or nine people, to 30, to something of 137 passengers, I think, is really nice. You know, on the long-term effect in the Augsburg Airport, I'm hoping that Breeze works out to be a partnership to market Augsburg as well and expand our city, so I'm pretty focused on Breeze.
Councillor Selly?
I prefer one of the larger airlines. Contour, I'm a little worried about their past reputation. That seems to be improving. Breeze, I like their presentation, I like their destinations. The one thing that concerns me there is that if they go, when they go into Washington to meet up with another airplane, the passengers have to claim their luggage, go through security again, recheck their luggage on another plane. I talked to Mr. Burns last night, and they were under the impression that they might be able to solve that problem before they come in and actually take over, which I believe he should be in September, October 1, October 1. If that's something that works out, I think, I think Breeze's proposal is the best proposal, depending on whether that works out or...
Councillor Stevenson shared comments with me that she asked me to share with council and the public this evening. Just a few thoughts to consider. Are we focusing on tourism as far as the airport, or are we considering business travelers as well? I personally took Contour Airline a few weeks ago. In the past, I had not had good luck. Since their new arrangement with Sky Air, I found it very reliable and convenient. I am able to get more connections in Philadelphia than I can at Dulles. The flight options were very convenient for connections. We have a fair number of people that work from home now in the area and have to travel to the headquarters quite frequently. I fly on average two to three times per month for business. The second item we need to consider is luggage. The airline that is selected is not convenient if you have to come in and out of security to claim it and recheck. That adds time and inconvenience. It will also require going through security again. I have conferred with many of my Canadian Realtor friends and fellow business travelers from the colony that travel to the conferences with me or travel for business regularly. They have the same concerns, and for those reasons, Councillor Stevenson is supportive of Contour's proposal. My own personal comments, again, this is based on the proposals that were made, the hard copies, the presentations that were made at the airport last week, which Councillor Powers, Councillor Scamperly, and I were able to attend, and then further communications from the Bridge and Port that have been shared with us in the past few days. With regards to Boutique's proposal, while I like the idea of the different destinations and options to choose from their proposal, I have a psychological issue with going back to an eight-passenger plane. To me, it just seems going in the wrong direction for what the Bridge and Port and what we hope the city is trying to do in trying to increase passenger traffic at the airport. Also, for the reasons that Councillor Scamperly pointed out with regards to the possibility that the jet that they're proposing may not be available to them when they start October 1, and if that's the case, they'll be operating in an eight-passenger prop plane. And I received information today from the Bridge and Port that it's possible, if they start the service with a prop plane, that an attempt to continue the subsidy with a switch over to a jet at a later time may not be supported by the Department of Transportation. So it puts an element of risk that, you know, they wouldn't get their subsidy unless it remained a prop plane. So for those reasons, it's my least attractive of the three options. With regards to the Contour proposal, at the presentation last week, the CEO stated, you know, that they determined the reasons that they have their services underperformed in the last two and a half years. They believe they've taken corrective actions to improve on their level of service, as has been commented on by Councillor Stevenson. I remain uncertain that, and... I'd have to be very certain based on the number of criticisms I've received in the public since January 1st, when we came on board as councillors, with regards to the underperformance of their proposal. Also, again, shared with us today, and I shared with council this afternoon, if Contour is the selected air carrier, then their subsidy would come from the alternative support, AEAS, which is where they currently get their subsidy. And under that, under that operation, the way it works is the airline completes their flight, and the Bridge and Port Authority pays the subsidy to the airline, and then the Bridge and Port Authority receives reimbursement from the federal government. So for that reason, the Bridge and Port Authority has a line of credit with the North Country Bank to help their cash flow, so they can front that money, that subsidy to Contour. But there's a concern with the possible exposure to the Bridge and Port at those times during the year. It doesn't happen every year, but, you know, if the federal government doesn't adopt the budget and they stop operations and start paying bills for a while, then that could leave the Bridge and Port Authority further exposed. So, so I think there's some concern about that. And then the Breeze proposal, I think the larger plane provides the better opportunity to grow air traffic within the Augsburg International Airport. If the Augsburg International Airport is able to provide travel to 10,000 or more passengers in a year, they become eligible for a million-dollar grant from the federal government to go toward airport renovations. And it seems to me that there's greater opportunity for the airport to achieve 10,000 or more passengers with 137 passenger flight, passenger flight flying daily versus 230 passenger flights flying out daily, which is the Contour proposal. But again, and I think it's somewhat significant, the risk in choosing Breeze is the fact that unlike the other two airlines, they do not have an interline relationship with another carrier, which means that passengers traveling to Washington, D.C., if they're continuing on, would have to get off the plane, get their luggage, go check into the next airline, you know, so there's a major inconvenience in just the logistics when you get to D.C., but also in booking your travel, you know, you may have to make two separate bookings just for the trip down, or trip to wherever you're going, and then, you know, two separate ones for the return. In their presentation, Breeze representatives indicated that they are in discussions with airlines that they did not mention, and understandably so during those type of negotiations. But they, their goal is to achieve at least one interline arrangement with another airline before they would start operations if they were chosen. And again, the current contract with Contour expires September 30, so that would mean October 1. So there's, there's risk that they may not accomplish it at that timeline. If they were awarded the contract, hopefully, it would be soon thereafter. But for the, for the reasons I've stated in doing my own, I'll say, personal analysis of the three proposals, I'm leaning toward Breeze, and I think it's a risk worth taking. Councillor Powers, when I spoke in today, did not offer anything specific other than in reviewing the proposals and having some discussion of the information that's been shared, his support would lie with Breeze Airlines as well. So with that, based on the comments made by those of us here voting tonight, it appears that Breeze has majority support, backing the end of support.
I think so. I have one other question. I really didn't get the answer, but talking with Mr. Burns, from what I picked up from the proposal, Breeze would like to add additional flights at future time, or to use to contemplate?
Well...
I'm a little concerned, only one flight a day.
In their original proposal, Breeze was proposing one flight a day, six days a week to Washington, D.C., and one day a week to Orlando. That was in their original proposal, but approximately two to three weeks ago, federal legislation was passed that puts a limit on how far an EAS subsidized airline can fly to get the subsidy, and that limit is 600 miles. And so for that reason, they withdrew the Orlando flight in their proposal that was submitted to the Bridge and Port and moved to seven flights, so one flight a week, a day, sorry, to Washington, D.C. I think it's a goal... Well, I'll say, I think it's a possibility that if enough market share could be established, and based on their marketing efforts, particularly, they indicate they're going to be very aggressively marketing in the Ottawa area, that they might consider adding another line that doesn't, that wouldn't be subsidized. You know, so no guarantees, no promises, but at the same time, again, based on the information shared with us a couple weeks ago, that it seems that a great deal of the traffic coming out of the Augsburg Airport is heading south, whether it's all the way to Florida or somewhere in between. That, that market might be there. Now, Breeze is already doing direct flights out of Plattsburgh, I believe, I think, twice a week right now, three times a week during the summer, to Orlando and to Tampa. So they already have a vehicle in, in Plattsburgh taking direct Florida flights, whether they would consider. I think, you know, the fact that two of their, I'll say, leaders in their company have that allegiance relationship, you know, and so they might have some familiarity already with what that market might look like. And again, Allegiant seemed to be doing all right until the pandemic, and then, you know, the travelers making use of it fell off so much, they had to withdraw their business. An attempt to answer your question.
Yeah, and the other, one other thing is I'm looking at their network flights. Did they say anything during the presentation about being able to continue on from... Did they say anything during the presentation about being able to continue on from Washington to other destinations on Bruce?
They didn't mention that, but I believe the plane that will be flying Augsburg to IAD to Washington DC would be the same plane returning. So a passenger would still have to get off their luggage, would still have to come off the plane, I believe, before it could transfer, but I don't know for a fact.
I'm just curious, is if they stayed with Breeze Airline going out of Washington, they could avoid the hassle of unchecking their luggage and rechecking. It's hard to tell. Something I couldn't pick up.
I can't remember myself. Yeah, I'm trying to remember my research, if I saw any other flights initiating in Washington DC going elsewhere with Breeze, and I don't know that I saw it. Thought they did, but I know that they 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 want the Washington. And I think this is going to help them get the interline. They've got a lot of flights going around this country. And they have, I believe, the interline with other with other airlines and other hubs. I think it's just a matter of going through a process, by the sounds of it, at least. And I didn't mean to cut in on you. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
And you know, another thing, these airlines, the Contour and the Breeze, both promised that in their contract, if things get going and and it's we're we're not satisfied or the OBP is not satisfied that that they can be let loose too, you know. Another thing to think about is, right now, in in the work, so to speak, with all the talk, there's there's discussion on a regional airport for the area here, the North Country. And I've already talked to folks from other villages and cities and and I think everybody is is supporting Augsburg to be that airport. And so another reason I want the bigger jet, you know, I can say anything about Contour, but but I'm just, I think that I'm really hoping that they get the interline action as soon as they can. I hope that council can do a weekend politically to sort of push that, make sure that happens. I think that the state investing this $20 million in the OBPA right now is is a is a huge factor is to which way the state is leaning for creating a regional airport up here. And I think though we're kind of shooting the dice on on the one con, I think we can hopefully get past that. And and I'm hoping that 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 doesn't last very long. So.
Do they seem to offer a lot of hope?
Yes.
That that was going to be, that's really the only con.
They they seem to think it was just a matter of getting things organized a little bit. Yeah, they're in discussion on that and very hopeful, as well as the at risk, they call it Flight for Florida. They're they're marketing themselves right after what what Allegiant was doing. They they've looked at the numbers, they've compared their their research a little bit and discussion and 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 they see the value here. So I think one of the things with, I think the Bridgeport suggested, maybe Mike knows, because they were looking to get Allegiant back and Allegiant wanted a guaranteed number of flights. And if they didn't, then the Bridgeport would have to reimburse them. So Breeze is kind of saying, well, you don't have to do that. And they're young airlines and it's a tough choice, honestly. But it's, I think I want I want to go with Breeze and try it. So. I think it worked well for the benefit of the community. Information was shared with us today from the Bridgeport prepared by Charles Gerolds, the Airport Director, Airport Manager for OBPA, where she listed pros and cons to each of the proposals. So I'll focus just on the ones for Breeze and Contour. With regards to Breeze, highlighted as a positive would be the the customer experience in traveling on their flights. They have features such as comfortable seating, complimentary snacks and drinks, user-friendly booking options, as well as Wi-Fi. I think they were the only airline of the three that offered Wi-Fi capability on the plane. Affordability, again, offered competitive fares, economic development, to speak to the point that that Councillor Sully raised. By establishing new routes, Breeze Airways can improve connectivity between our region and key business hubs, tourist destinations and markets. This increased accessibility can attract more visitors, businesses and investment to the area stimulating economic activity. The cons, again, very significant downside, the lack of an interline connection right now with another airline. And then another, since this is a relatively new airline, concern that Breeze might face challenges in consistently delivering high-quality service, especially during peak travel times where it dilutes unexpected disruptions. But if you look at the proposal Breeze prepared, they did some analysis comparison to other airlines with regards to quality of service on time, on time departure, things like that. They they were fairly highly rated, even even though they're only three years old. With regards to Contour, the pros spoke about regional connectivity, specializing in serving regional markets, offering convenient connections between smaller cities that may not be well served by larger carriers. Also highlighted for comfortable experience for the passengers, spacious seating, complimentary snacks and beverages on select routes. And then they do have an interline agreement with American Airlines and Alaska Airlines. The downside, Charlie noted a limited route network. While Contour Airlines provides valuable connectivity for regional travelers, its route network is smaller compared to larger airlines, limiting options for those traveling to major hubs or international destinations. Limited brand awareness, Contour Airlines may face challenges in terms of brand recognition, particularly among travelers who are more familiar with larger airlines. This could impact its ability to attract new customers and expand its customer base. And then the third, which I've already highlighted, that they would have to operate under a public charter to serve Augsburg Airport, which leads them to be funded, the subsidy through the alternate essential air service, which is a downside for the Bridgeport Authority. Any further discussion? Then I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution to read beginning paragraph four. Whereas after consideration, the Augsburg City Council recommends the proposal from Breeze Airways, providing service to Washington DC IAD. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby supports the proposal from Breeze as preferred proposal for essential air service for the Augsburg Airport. I so move that amendment. Any further discussion? Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Sully?
Yes.
Councillor Scampely?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tuley?
Yes.
Approved. And then, Mayor, I'm sorry, we have to.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. And now I'll ask for a motion to adopt the resolution as amended.
Thank you. Councillor Scampely?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tuley?
Yes.
Councillor Sully?
Yes.
Approved.
All right. So that brings us to old business and we'll begin with interim city manager, Andrea Smith.
Okay, Mayor. So as a follow-up to the discussion at the last council meeting with regard to the placement of waste and debris specifically, I think it was yard waste, within the right of way, there was a question about how the city deals with debris that is potentially placed by another property owner on someone else's property. And I would reference chapter 181, section 10, placement of solid waste for collection, disposal or donation, which reads as follows. All items intended for collection, disposal or donation are to be placed on the city's right-of-way immediately adjacent to, but not on or obstructing public streets, alleys, lanes, fire hydrants, sewers, catch basins, sidewalks or walkways in a neat and orderly manner. Items are to be placed immediately in front of the property from which it was generated and on no other location or property. So our ordinance does not permit residents to place waste of any kind on other properties. And if you find that someone has placed debris on your property, if you have proof that it was placed there by someone else, then we would encourage you to report that to the police department and they can follow up. Otherwise, it is assumed to be yours and it is your responsibility.
Questions or comments?
I don't think the city can do much more than that. I mean, really. Don't have the proof. It's yours. And then I would suspect that if somebody's dumping on your property, the police would get involved, take care of the matter, correct?
Correct.
They can identify. Right.
I guess my concern is if it's determined that it's not yours, somebody else put it there, is the property owner liable for the cost of having it picked up? And how do they, if somebody's dumping in the middle of the night, how do they recover whatever cost they may have?
Yeah. And and I think the answer is unless unless it can be determined who dropped the debris there, then I don't know that there's other recourse. The the potential, though, remains that if the if the property owner doesn't do anything with it, then they might subject themselves to some sort of of fine for failure to maintain the property.
I just hate to see two neighbors shoveling their debris from one side of the property and to the other all summer long. Which I can see happening.
Most people have cameras.
The proliferation of cameras makes it a little more easy to figure out what's going on. And it's not really related to that part of discussion, but I've fielded four or five phone calls about our policy and I'm telling you, it's not very popular. It's still in effect, but the the calls I've got is it's still early June, people are still working on their yards and our pickup dates are gone by. I think it's something we may need to consider in the future, extending that date a little bit or starting a little later with the pickups and extending it a little farther into June. I I don't have, I'm not going to offer a different solution or resolution at this time, but I think it's something we need to think about. The change department needs to be involved in that process too, because that's who it affects.
Yeah, I think the challenge was, you know, we have early spring this year, so people are cleaning the yards in April. And then, you know, for people who may be living outside of the city during the winter months and they return in April, May, and now they're getting their yards together and you know, so the timeline is challenging. And again, it's something that council can can explore in discussion with staff if we get into the next season.
So I, that's a different conversation than what we're having here.
Yeah.
But first of all, and I can't remember now if we agreed to have the 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 week or so before Seaway Festival as a as a cleanup or or no, we eliminated that. Okay. Just just on that. But yeah, I mean, obviously that's something you talk about at budget time or whatever. This year we extended the the beginning for people, so they weren't getting tickets. There's options during the summer.
Hey, anybody else? Thank you, Andrea. Any other old business? Brings us to new businesses. Does anyone have new business present to council this evening? Seeing none brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion this evening? I would just like to acknowledge Augsburg Xanta. This past week made a $500 donation to the city to help pay for swim lessons for for children in the community. So again, we thank them for their continuing generosity, not only to the city, but to the many organizations they support through their fundraising efforts.
Mayor, I have just one, I didn't put on the agenda, but I was reminded by some of those in attendance this evening. Grievance Day is tomorrow. The Board of Assessment and Review will meet here at City Hall between the hours of 10 a.m. and noon and 2 to 4 and again, 6 to 8. So anybody that would like to contest their assessment is welcome to come to any of those sessions. They just need to bring with them their completed RP 524 form and they can present that to the Board of Assessment and Review at that time.
Thank you, Andrea. That brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have two minutes.
I'm John Lawrence, by the way. I live on J Street. Andrea, you flip off the the form numbers and the committee hours, you know, just like that. And then you say they'll get back to you in three weeks. Could there anywhere on the website that's going to list the meeting and, you know, what the process entails? You know, the forum, you go in front of, I'm not going to say anymore about the people on that committee. And then they have it at their whim to get back to you within three weeks, whether yes or no. And then if you don't like the decision, you've got to go to court. Seems a little bit much for taxpayer in Hattensburg. Really does. I mean, there should be a different appeal process. If it's a state appeal process or a county appeal process, names, numbers, times, scheduling to get it taken care of. But just don't throw us out there. And it's not your job after the first, I understand. But.
Isn't information at the website, Real Property Tax Service, whatever, with regards to the timeline?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
I don't want to take up your two minutes.
We're suspended. Go ahead.
So the grievance process is established under real property tax law. You have two options to start the process. The first is with the assessor, directly with the assessor through making an appointment or attending the hours in which the assessor is required by New York State law to quote-unquote sit with the tenancy role. Those hours concluded on Saturday when the assessor and the clerk were here from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m.
Were those hours published?
They were published. In accordance with New York State law, they were published for three consecutive weeks.
In the water time.
As well as on our website and our Facebook page. So those those office hours have now concluded. Tomorrow is the next step, which is with the Board of Assessment and Review. You can obtain an RP 524 form through the city's website, augsburg.org, through the government tab by clicking on assessment on the left-hand side. There's a series of hyperlinks, the first of which is applications and forms. All of the exemption forms are there as well as the RP 524 form and the instructions. If that's too difficult, you can also go to New York State Department of Taxation and Finance and obtain the RP 524 form there along with a booklet that explains in detail the entire grievance procedure, contesting your assessment is what it's titled. It's for all property owners in New York State. And it gives you explicit and detailed instructions on how to complete the RP 524 form, because the grievance process is the same across all of New York State.
Okay.
The applications are then submitted to the Board of Assessment and Review on Grievance Day. And by law, the board has to meet until 8 p.m. and we will accept applications until that time. And if there are a number of people here, the board can adjourn to a later date, but you And if there are a number of people here, the board can adjourn to a later date, but you have to have been, your application has to have been received no longer than 8 p.m. on Grievance Day, which is June 11th this year. They will give each applicant an opportunity to verbally review their request and submit their form and their backup documentation, which will be received by them. And then, but there are no decisions made on Grievance Day. The board will adjourn at the conclusion of the evening and they will independently conduct their deliberation and they will complete their deliberation before the finalization of the final rule, which for Augsburg is on or before August 1st. So you will then receive a notification if you contested your assessment in the mail. It gives you the findings of the Board of Review.
Excuse me. When do I get that notification? After August 1st?
Our rule has to be finalized by August 1st.
Right.
And you will receive it on or around that same time.
What happened in the three weeks?
I don't, I didn't say anything about three weeks or no.
I thought I heard you. I missed. Well, I'm.
And after August 1st, you can continue to grieve your assessment by filing in small claims court.
There you go.
But otherwise, the findings of the Board of Assessment and Review are final.
Okay. Well, I'm not grieving 2024. I'm grieving 2023 because I received no tax assessment. I called and spoke to you about it back in January or something, why I hadn't received anything. Mike, I sent you a text or an email on it that I hadn't received any mailing on it. I went to Canton, I called over there, I called the school system. They told me they came out of here and somebody here told me that they remembered mailing him that that poor Kathy had her arms full and people were just dragging them down and dropping it on mail. I received nothing for 2023 and I haven't received anything for 2024. Evidently, it's not finalized until August. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Whose fault?
The tentative rule is available on the city's website now.
I saw it. It's open. It's running right now, believe it or not. The second one, it wouldn't go up. Did you do something? No. Well, who is responsible for mailing out tax success assessments?
Well, so.
I'm looking for somebody to blame for last year.
So change of assessment notifications are mailed in advance of the tentative rule, which is filed in May of every year. And if you don't typically, if you don't receive a change of assessment notification, although there can be a mix up in the in the U.S. mail, that means your assessment didn't change. So that's.
Well, I didn't, my change, my assessment didn't change this year. It changed last year.
So you can contest your assessment every year. Every property owner can contest their assessment.
After I've paid for a year on it.
Every property owner also has the ability to check the tentative rule, which is published every year in May. It's available by law on our website as well as state and counties.
I just want to ask a question and I'll be done. Okay. And I'm not going to put you on the spot any longer. Are the residents and taxpayers of Augsburg all that efficient and proficient in the use of our website? Do we assume, or did they just sit here and take it?
No, I mean, you know, we take advantage of the means available, most efficient means available to communicate information such as the timeline to follow.
Do you publish any notice on that? Being the biggest notice I ever noticed when I come here to see a council meeting and I walk up, not this week, we're going to do it next week. It's been canceled. That happened two or three times. I met you up front one night.
That was last year.
That was last year. So, you know, and there was nothing on the website. But, you know, the website's got to do more than just throw thousands of statistics out there. It's got to post.
Well, or if an individual taxpayer is having difficulty finding the information on the website, then they can call member city staff.
Is there a note saying that?
I don't know. There's a note saying that, but, you know, to me that's.
Increase the workload. But, I mean, how many taxpayers besides the church and city? Nobody.
No, but, but, you know, the responsibility falls back to make a phone call.
Yeah. But how do they know to make a phone call? That's my question.
Well, it. Yeah.
Who do you call?
Start with the call with the city manager.
Kathy, I spoke to Kathy about tax mailings. She said.
No, I think it's worthwhile, you know, having staff check to see why you haven't received hard, especially last year with the reassessment, why you may not have received. And again, it could be, it could be city air, it could be mail air. I mean, I don't know which way to identify why.
But who do I speak to? That's what Jesus said. I should speak to somebody.
Right.
Anyway, it's my two minutes. Sorry about that.
Anyone else? All right. If anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the RACAN feature. The city clerk will recognize it. Unmute one person at a time and you will have two minutes.
The first individual is registered as Wendy Hamilton and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to comment about the airline applications, the EAS proposals. I tend to agree with all of you about Boutique Air, Contour, they have great schedule. Philadelphia is a great hub, but they have been lacking in crew and, you know, planes to actually fulfill their commitments. But otherwise, they look good on paper. But I will ask you about Breeze because the proposal I read said it would be once a day and it would depart at 7:45 p.m., arriving in Dulles at 21:25. And I don't know about you, but I don't want to be in Dulles at 21:25. There's no flights out. There are direct flights from Dulles to Orlando on other airlines, but you'd never be able to connect to them. So I don't know if they updated their proposal to say, oh, no, we're going to do that at, you know, 7:45 a.m., which, you know, would get you into Dulles and give you more options. But as it stands, none of the proposals are really sufficient. And I think we know what happens when we hope that things change down the line. And they rarely do. So we would have to take these proposals at face value. I'm sort of sorry that you voted on your resolution. I was hoping that you would just keep the resolution to one of sending a letter of support to the Port Authority after you sort of opened it up for comments from the public, because there is a public commenting page, but it's difficult to navigate and maybe the public doesn't know about it. But maybe had you opened it up to the public here in Augsburg, you might have got a few more suggestions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I'll just make a comment about that. Bridgeport Authority is on a very tight timeline to make their recommendation to the Department of Transportation. Their recommendation is due, I believe, on June 19. They have scheduled a special meeting this Thursday, I believe at 5 o'clock at the Bridgeport Authority offices, at which time their Board of Directors is expected to make a recommendation as to which one of these three airlines they want to propose. So that, you know, after the proposal, after the presentations last week, that didn't leave as much time as a council to have discussion and deliberation about this, which is why we placed it on the agenda tonight, so that we could include in the agenda packet all the hard copy of the proposals that were submitted by all three carriers, you know. So we made our, again, our best attempt to try to get information out to the public, to give them the opportunity to speak to us tonight, whether in person or remotely. And now, any other concerns at this point about which airline might be chosen or might not be chosen should be directed to the Bridgeport Authority before Thursday at 5:00. Go ahead, Kathy.
I do not see any other hands raised.
Right. I'll introduce the next resolution, a resolution to adjourn to executive session. Whereas the interim city manager requests meeting with city council in executive session to discuss proposed acquisition, sale or lease of real property where public discussion would substantially affect the value thereof. And whereas New York State Open Meetings Law permits city council to adjourn to executive session for such purpose, now therefore be it resolved that city council adjourn to executive session proposed to discuss proposed acquisition, sale or lease of real property and be it further resolved that any action resulting from this executive session shall be taken in an open session. I so move.
Second.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Counsel Trim?
Yes.
Counsel Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counsel Sully?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
And then I'll introduce the following resolution to adjourn to executive session. Whereas the interim city manager requests meeting with city council in executive session to discuss the matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. And whereas New York State Open Meetings Law permits city council to adjourn to executive session for such purpose, now therefore be it resolved that city council adjourn to executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation, be it further resolved that any action resulting from this executive session shall be taken, open session, I so move.
Second.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Counsel Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counsel Sully?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Counsel Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
And we do not anticipate any action coming out of executive sessions, so I'll make a motion to adjourn from executive session. Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.